Good morning. It's eight thirty, and I'm going to call the meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners from March twenty-fifth to order. I will be chairing today. Our Chair, Commissioner Campbell, is out of town, and our Vice Chair, Commissioner Mojo, is in St. Paul, about an hour and a half away from having to testify on behalf of some of the bills we're trying to get through for the good of our county. We're grateful for the extra effort that Jenny is putting in for her. She is with us remotely until she's got to go to speak to the legislators. All right, first order on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens present who want to address the commission on anything that is not on today's agenda? Steve, do we have anybody online?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Next, approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and vouchers.
I'll second the motion.
You have motion to second, any discussion? If not, we'll need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of minutes from March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Let's see.
A motion to second, any further discussion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Kravenoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is request approval to appoint Josh Schrader to the Planning Commission. And we have Matt Jacobson, or Jack Matheson. Matt Jacobson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Jacobson.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, good morning. Here to bring forth a recommendation from the Planning Commission for an appointment of a new Planning Commissioner. We had a Planning Commissioner from Barnesville, Brentburg, who stepped down in March eighteenth, and so just want to thank him for his service to Clay County. And we have a recommendation for an appointment of Josh Schrader. And Josh is from Barnesville. He's on the Barnesville Planning and Zoning Commission, and the motion was unanimous to recommend him. Any questions for me at all?
Any questions? Okay, if not, we'll move to a vote.
I'll make a...
Or I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Josh Schrader to a three-year term for the Clay County Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion.
You have motion to second, any further discussion?
I have one thing, Chair. I was at this meeting, I filled in for Jenny, and yeah, he had unanimous approval to be brought forward to this committee, so.
Very good. Okay, any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kravenoff? Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Motion passes, and extend our welcome to Mr. Schrader and...
And he's here today.
You are here. Mr. Schrader, do you have anything you want to say?
All votes already passed, so I don't know what else to say. Yeah, you're... Like Matt said, I've been on the Barnesville Planning and Zoning Commission for three years with Brentburg. He's our Chair. Enjoyed working with him, and when he said he was planning on stepping down from this commission and kind of opened it up, I didn't jump in right away, but considered it, and seemed like a reasonable position to be in. I'm an engineer, I've worked for KLJ for the last eighteen years now. My family's lived in Barnesville that long. I've got an older daughter who is going to Morehead State for education. My younger daughter is graduating from high school this year and going to Duluth, so I have time. I travel a little bit for work, but I have pretty good control of my schedule and stuff like that, so I don't see there being any conflicts that would keep me from serving on the board. So I'd be happy to tell you more about myself, otherwise I'll just get to work.
Well, we're excited to have your skills and your experience and your energy on this important position, and Matt does an amazing job, and we are just really excited to have people from all around the county who can give us the input we need to make good decisions. Sounds like you've got the education and the experience to be a real attribute, so welcome aboard.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have annual department update from Department of Corrections probation. Dale Arnold's with us. Dale, good morning.
Morning.
That's actually on her business card.
Good morning. So I put forth somewhat of an agenda here, kind of some of the things that I want to talk about and go over today. Some of that stuff is going to be county data. I'm going to go over the staff that we have in the department, any changes. I'm going to talk a little bit about our specialty courts, a little bit more on the DWI Court, which is something new since last year, what we've been doing regarding cognitive behavioral therapy in our department, and some of the groups that we've rolled out, and then the case planning roadmap. And all of this stuff is somewhat of a response to the data that I'm going to talk about today, and hopefully I'll be able to connect those dots. So the first slide here, the thing I want to first bring up is that the data that I'll be talking about will be from 2020, so for the last five years. I know, it's tiny, hard to see. Try to make that little wheel there maybe a little easier for those sitting further away, but I'll go over the important pieces of this. It's probably worth noting that the population of Clay County since 2020 has increased by roughly a thousand people, and then our neighboring county has increased by about seventeen thousand people since 2020. So we have seen population increase, although I think that's probably one of the mechanisms in play for the numbers that I'm going to talk about. You can probably guess that some of the data is a response to the pandemic. Since 2020, staffing for the Sheriff's Department, police departments, and things like that. So in looking at this, the first one on the left there, what you're going to notice is that in reference to the assault category, the second one down, and domestic assault, there's been a significant increase in open probation cases in our office. And so you can see with domestic assault, two hundred roughly in 2020, and then four hundred in 2024. So that has doubled. Going down to drug-related convictions in open cases, we've got about three hundred and three, three hundred and twenty-one in 2021, and then jumping up to four hundred and sixty-seven in 2024. And if you kind of scroll down those, you can see that it's progressing in every category. DWI is eighty-eight to one hundred and sixty. Escape or flight, so those people not returning from furlough status, fifty-seven to one hundred and twenty-seven. In theft, one sixteen and two oh eight. And the wheel on the right there shows the whole five years. If you were to group everything together by category, the majority of cases are assault, or I'm sorry, drug cases, at one point seven thousand, and then second, but closely behind are domestic assault cases, and then third is like theft. So those make up the majority, or the bulk, of cases that we supervise. The graph in the bottom right is the juvenile cases, traffic accident, theft, and then the one down there, the federal juvenile cases, the two point four. Those are transfers typically that make up that bar from other states where maybe the offense category doesn't necessarily match the Minnesota offense category. And you can think how North Dakota sentences cases differently than Minnesota.
Dale?
Yes.
Yes, what's the difference between theft and burglary?
So theft could be of like an item, and then it's separated by the amount of the theft, right? And so it could be like a cellphone or something worth value. This is a good question for Brian. But burglary, depending upon the level of burglary, could be of a residence, entering somebody's residence or a business, and that kind of depends...
Okay.
Where all that stuff falls, right?
Very good.
Thank you.
So I'm going to break this down a little bit further. I'll go over this relatively quickly. You can see the, on the left one there, probation felony cases by offense, so just the felony offenses, seven hundred and fifty-three in 2020, twenty twenty-four, one thousand three hundred and thirty-three. That's a steep slope going up there. Same for gross misdemeanor, one forty-four to twenty-six. Misdemeanor, one thirty-eight to thirty-eight. Juvenile cases, if you look, one eighty-seven on the bottom there to two twenty-four in 2024. And some of the numbers there representing what makes up the majority of those categories, you know, again, misdemeanor is domestic assault, gross misdemeanor, you're looking at DWIs and domestic assault, and then with the felonies, it's the drug offenses, domestic assault and assault and theft. There's another subcomponent of supervision. You could think of it as parole, but we call it supervised release. And so after somebody's sentence is executed, or they're a commit to the commissioner, they get released on parole. Throughout the state of Minnesota, all of those cases are handled through the HRU process, and so there is no judge really affiliated after the point that their sentences are executed. But nevertheless, we have data on that, too, a majority of those cases being drug cases, assault, some theft, and then criminal sexual conduct. ISR cases, so intensive supervised release, again, throughout the entire state, those being released from prison are assessed at their risk level, which takes into account the seriousness of their offense, their risk for recidivism in the community, and if they score high enough or for varying reasons, they can be placed on intensive supervised release, which is a subcomponent of the state, and that's run by the state. And so those are the most serious offenses and people being released. And you can see there, the majority of those are drugs, domestic assault, there's some weapons in there. And then the bottom right category is showing that in Clay County from 2020, there's roughly twenty people on ISR in the county, and in 2024, that jumped way over fifty. And that could be for, that'd be a really difficult thing to guess at. I mean, the assessment that they use hasn't changed. It could be just, you know, ten years ago, there was a number of people that were sentenced to serious crimes, and now they're just kind of being released for one reason or another. Breakdown of just the overall cases, you can see just an increase from 2020 in felony, gross misdemeanor, misdemeanor, petty misdemeanor, kind of irrelevant, but with that blue bar there, those are the felony cases increasing in their county. This is the number of PSIs that we're completing, the pre-sentence investigation reports. That's a big subcomponent of our office. It takes up quite a bit of our time. You know, obviously, we want to put together the best comprehensive report that we can for the court in those cases that need that. And you can see that, you know, in 2020, we did three hundred and thirty-three PSIs, 2024, we're up to four hundred and two, and it's been kind of up and down through that time period. An interesting statistic down there on the bottom, the number of homeless that are active on our caseloads in 2024, one hundred and nine. And so you can think how that plays into the homelessness population that we're serving, and how that relates to how we conduct supervision. I wish I had the five-year on that. That would have been an interesting stat to get, I couldn't get that. The number of pre-plea worksheets has increased since 2020. The number of PDIs, so juvenile investigations, has increased. You can see there a couple more, and we'll be almost doubling that one. I've got some data on discharge information, and so, you know, we do our best to recognize when there's risk in the clients that we're supervising, and then we also identify when clients are doing well, right? If our assessment reflects that they are low risk to recidivism or to continuing their status quo behavior, and they're able to prove that, we will definitely request that the court discharge them early. Of the felony cases in 2024, a hundred, and of the discharges, a hundred and eighty-two discharges, roughly about fifty percent of them were discharged early. And then about twenty-seven percent of the felony cases in 2024 made it through the full period of supervision. Gross misdemeanor cases, you're going to get a little bit more of them making it through their entire period of supervision, simply because gross misdemeanor cases have a shorter timeframe for supervision, on average, maybe like two years. And so we still discharge gross misdemeanor cases early if the client can show that they're doing well. Some discharge data there on the juvenile cases as well. You could see that very rarely we discharge early on the juvenile cases. You know, those are even a shorter timeframe, sometimes six months. And so I thought that was all interesting stuff. Violation outcome information, what are the violations looking like in our department? The majority of the violations we file are probation violations. You can see there that very few are juvenile violations, and then very few down there, that S is those supervised release or parole file violations. And the reason for that is just because the vast majority of the cases we handle are probation cases. We just, that's the most of the clients that we're dealing with. Some transfer information, as you can probably expect, since we're neighboring a very large city, we do a lot of transfers. And you can see since 2020, fifty-one out-of-state transfers, 2024, one hundred and sixty-seven. Transfer-in responses, we're also seeing an influx of cases coming in, and so a lot of movement between the two counties here. And the orange bar there on the bottom right is showing that the amount of cases that we're rejecting is staying roughly the same. So as the numbers continue to grow on convictions and then cases being placed on supervision, the transfers will continue to grow going out, and that, again, is another piece of of our, of the duties that we do in the office. Finally, well, not finally, there's more, but some recidivism data. For the first six months, the first year, two years, and three years, and this is data from 2019 and thereafter, the first bar there on the left is Clay County probation, the dark blue bar. The second, the light blue bar there is the statewide average. And so you can see for the first six months there, we've got ninety-four point five percent for Clay County, ninety-four percent of people are successful after the first six months of completing probation, and then ninety-six is the state average. So we've got to get to work on the first six months. But if you go all the way over to the very right column, we're doing a great job at three years. Eighty-seven point six percent of our clients, after successfully completing probation, are successful after three years, and the state average is eighty-five. The dark green bar is parole cases. So seventy-seven point six percent of our parole cases after completing parole stay felony-free after three years, and the state average is seventy percent. And so we're doing good there. Really, looking at that data shows the efforts that the agents in the office, everybody in the office, is making toward reducing recidivism.
Dale, let me ask you a question on recidivism. Looking at the ISR cases and the big spike you've got in those coming out, I have a theory, and it may be something you don't want to confirm, but I know that the Department of Corrections is moving towards a community punishment or community role in incarceration of prisoners. I'm sure they're using the same standards when they release them to determine if they need ISR or not, but I think there's going to be, and we can plan on it from what Commissioner Schnell has said, there's going to be more people being released that traditionally would have been maintained in the prisons. If these are, if the recidivism rate isn't increased, I think that's a win, even if it's ISR people, as long as you have adequate staff to maintain it. Do you have a breakdown, and I know it's just in this last year they've been doing it, are you seeing a higher recidivism rate on ISRs than the rest of the population?
And so I don't have the data for ISR. I would assume that that's the subcomponent of the supervised release portion over here. And part of that reason is because those on ISR are on ISR for roughly about a year time, or CIP, the challenging incarceration program. After they successfully complete ISR or complete the challenging incarceration program, they come to our office for supervision. And so that is a reflection of those people that successfully complete ISR and then come back. To answer your question about the people that don't complete ISR, I don't have that data. About early release, if you're referencing MRNA and some of the other policies, yeah. There isn't any, there's, as far as I know, there's no policy set in stone around some of that stuff, so it's a little early to tell. All I can say is that, from what I have seen, it appears that the decision behind that is justified or driven by, you know, some level of reasoning behind, many of those people are not high-risk, right? And so they're going to use evidence-based practices to determine who amongst the population would be eligible for that type, that type of supervision or that type of release or early release.
And I think that's worth a try, just when you look at expense and probably fairness.
Yeah.
But when you're talking about an ISR population, that's where you guys are under a little heat.
Yeah, yeah, and so...
Maintain them.
It's a little too early to speak, for me to speak to that, you know? But I'm aware of many of the concerns that others have brought forth to me as well, and I guess we'll see.
Well, there's better answers than jail for a lot of people.
Yeah.
If we have the resources in the community, in the staff in the community, to give these folks a chance to turn things around. Anyway, I won't elaborate, just thank you.
It leads me to, that's a good segue into this next slide here. So in the county, and across the state actually, the assessment we use to determine risk for the clients that we supervise is the LSCMI, the Level of Service Case Management Inventory. We assess risk on every client on supervision, and these bars show the number of high-risk individuals in the county, the number of low-risk individuals in the county, and the number of medium-risk individuals in the county. And we really focus intervention work and target our efforts toward the high and medium-risk individuals. And I'm going to talk about how we're doing that, and how we're trying to focus on some of the data that I had talked about in the next coming slides. Before I do that, I want to talk about our excellent staff in the department. We have six office administrative staff to tackle a variety of different things. We have one new DWI Court agent as of February. DWI Court has started. We have one drug court agent, and we have three high-risk agents, two of which supervise the majority of the sex offender caseload in the county. We have one pre-trial agent who also does some high-risk supervision, and then we have five medium and low-risk agents. And the reason for that, as you can probably imagine, if I go back to that graph, is the medium-risk bar is the largest bar. They make up the majority of the individuals on supervision. Two juvenile agents, two gross misdemeanor misdemeanor agents, one sentence-to-service agent, and then we have three intensive supervised release agents that work out of our office to do ISR in the area. DWI Court, as I had said, is something new as of February. February fifth, they had started. You know, it's the mission of the Clay County DWI Court to save the lives in our community by providing comprehensive, multidisciplinary response to address repeat DWI clients who have substance use disorder. The provision of accountability, intensive supervision, and collaboration with evidence-based treatment will enhance the lives of those impacted by substance use and increase public safety and reduce recidivism, as well as the costs to society. And the individuals pass through a series of phases, gradually decreasing in intensity in DWI Court. Clay County is one of three counties in the state working with the IDA, in an IDA pilot, which is the impaired driving assessment. And the reason why we boarded the ship with that is, you know, on the one hand, we've got, we're starting DWI Court, but on the other hand, we know that our assessment tool, the LSCMI, is not really great at predicting risk with the DWI clients that we supervise. And so the IDA is a secondary assessment tool that's really going to help us focus on where, to streamline our efforts, where they need to be with this population. And then we also, and that's, of course, DWI Court is a granted position. Our DWI Court agent is also part of our SPOL grant, which provides trainings, TZD conferences, workshops, education, and outreach. And like I had said, IDA will assist as a double assessment in conjunction with our current LSCMI. Our drug court, to improve public safety and reduce direct and indirect costs to the community associated with substance use and related criminal activity, the use of evidence-based practices, uses a multicultural, multidisciplinary approach to break the cycle of substance abuse and to improve clients' lives by involving them in a rigorous and supportive program that includes intensive treatment, drawing on participants' strengths, supervision, and personal accountability. Collaboration between our adult justice system and the community results in educated and productive adults, healthy families, stronger and safer communities. And so similar to the DWI Court, this works on a phased basis. And, you know, one caveat of the drug court, which I think is really interesting and neat, is that clients are required to complete a forty-hour graduation project that gives back to the community. So that's been nice to see some of those outcomes.
I have a question there, Dale.
Yep.
With the drug court and the DUI court, DWI Court, it shows twelve active five being screened. Is there a limit on how many you can have go to that?
Yeah, I would say so, you know? And they vary a little bit between the drug court and DWI Court. Both of them are voluntary.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And, you know, there's a carrot usually hanging for somebody to join either drug court or DWI court. It's an intense form of supervision. Somebody on phase one in DWI Court has three tests a week. And so we, you know, the aim is to obviously help them assist in changing their behavior. And so somebody might join for a variety of different reasons.
It is, with the DWIs, they're involved in the court, they're all upper-level felony recidivists that...
Some of them, yeah. You know, the IDA assessment, so like even if it's somebody's very first DWI, and even if it's a misdemeanor, they might not, you know, they might not even get placed on probation. But if it's a... But if it's a second or a subsequent DWI, they're looking at a gross misdemeanor offense or something like that, our IDA assessment will really help predict how, what the alcohol use looks like, right, for that person. And so even though it's their second DWI, where you, like, the problem might be far worse than what their criminal history is showing. And so there's a, for that person, maybe they have the intrinsic motivation to really want to change their behavior and they would join that voluntarily to really make a change in their lives. So, a lot of, you know, the people that complete these programs show high-level motivation. They talk about these programs. They really enjoy the process when completed. I can see even from the court side of things that was involved, you know, behind the bench, the judges, they enjoy the process. And so like it's, it's a win-win for everybody involved. Got a couple of slides left. Where am I at for time? Am I way over? Am I good? Okay. So in the last year, we've started some cognitive behavioral programming in the community. We're really doing our best to, especially with high-risk individuals, to have them complete these programs. First one is the Decision Points Program. It's a roughly eight to ten session program. It has an open door, so anybody can join at any time. There's no start date or end date. And it's, it's been shown to be really effective in helping people work on their thinking and their emotional state and make better decisions, being less impulsive. We have four agents in the office that have stepped up to receive training and are running that in the county, free to the clients, free to the county. There's no charge for running that, and that's been a huge benefit, I believe. Moving On is another cognitive behavioral therapy program specific to adult women. We know, generally speaking, that the pathway into the criminal justice world for women is different than men. Sometimes it's trauma-driven, among other reasons. And this program really helps to target and identify those pathways and work with that population. I have three staff trained for Moving On in the last year, who, by the way, some of the members of the program are in, in some of the other, like Drug Court or DWI Court. And so like it's, it's, it's been really nice to see the staff really enjoy this programming and some of the feedback that I'm seeing from some of the notes from the staff has been very positive for the clients that are in it. Myself, speaking as a Decision Points trainer for many years, it is very valuable for, you know, our, it's very valuable for our connection with the clients and, you know, creating an effective alliance with them to move forward, gaining trust, and helping break down some of the barriers that they have. Moving On is a longer curriculum, about twenty-six sessions, and that's once a week. And so the staff are really dedicated to following through with this. It's been really, it's been nice to see from my side of things. Finally, some 2024 additions in the department. I've had one staff become a safety trainer with the state. I've had three staff, like I had said, trained in Moving On, one in Decision Points. Both groups are actively running right now and getting a lot of positive feedback. We continue to run scheduled MAD panel services in the office. Agent Beam and Erickson continue to do that, which has been great for, for many of the clients. The department in conjunction with other stakeholders will continue to be part of the State Attendance Review Board, which is something new, attempting to circumvent truancy cases in all Clay County schools. And Agent Turnus has stepped up to be part of that board. And so that's another growing concern that we have seen. Staff are working with individual case plans with all medium and high-risk clients, as I had talked about, and they target the driver. And so as you can, as you can think about somebody being on supervision, for instance, for a DWI, you would think you would target substance abuse, but studies show us that that may not be the reason for their behavior. It could be some underlying things such as anger, their relationship with family or marital, their social circles. And so we attempt to work on addressing and identifying those things. And the, and the way that we do that is through the use of intervention strategies. And Clay County has more than doubled its use of interventions with clients in conjunction with the case planning process in the last year. The DOC is a leader in the state in its ability to provide coaching, training, and other services to staff to improve effectiveness with clients. Coaching with staff has become an important factor on improving the fidelity of our delivery of those interventions, and Clay County is actively coaching with all staff. They record their sessions with their clients and receive feedback on their ability to do motivational interviewing, their ability to deliver the interventions. And so it is somewhat of an intricate process, and it has been shown to be very beneficial. In 2024, the DOC Field Services implemented a case planning roadmap, and that's what that little, there's a reduction in transparency there on the right side, that's the case planning roadmap. It includes an eight-step guide from the time of initial engagement and assessment with a client to the time of discharge. The roadmap follows the most stringent evidence-based approaches, including not only the use of one-on-one interventions, but incorporating the use of group cognitive behavioral programming in the community. So you can see there is somewhat of a structured way to do this. And part of that roadmap allows the agent the discretion to really target their interventions with the client based on the client's needs. And so we, we look at each individual separate from one another. We look at their needs specifically, and that's what this roadmap helps the agents to do. Something that I didn't have when I started, I wish I would have, would have bet, it would have helped me, helped me get running. The department has also created an internal domestic violence committee to establish a more linear, policy-driven reunification process in principles ensuring victim safety and reducing the likelihood of recidivism in response to some of that domestic, that domestic data that you've seen.
I'm sure it's responsible, but that kind of having run a domestic violence unit, there is no pressure put on the victim to reunite, is there?
Are you saying from the perpetrator?
Well, there's always from the perpetrator.
Right.
Is, is that program for domestic violence, that is for the perpetrator and directed towards the perpetrator?
That's what, that's what we've been talking about. The reunification process should not only include the steps that the victim would need to take in order for us to gain confidence about the perpetrator moving in with the victim, but we believe there's also steps the perpetrators should take, right? They should also have a safety plan themselves, things that they can do to remove themselves from a situation that might get, grow out of hand and otherwise. And as you can imagine, with parole cases, those cases or transfers in from an adjacent state, those cases are not eligible for our, our domestic violence court. And so we have to put forth a plan to really target those individuals to. To answer your question, and maybe Brian could help me with this too a little bit, I believe that prior to allowing or removing a DANCO or a domestic no-contact order, the victim would have to either submit something in writing requesting that the DANCO be lifted or go through the victim reunification process with Victim Services or another, trying to think of the other. Yeah, through Victim Services.
They draw their own safety plan, the victim, with Victim Services, and they have to show they've done that to then allow for.
There is scrutiny on the motivation of the victim as well, that they're, to determine if there's coercion or if there's some real red flags that she or he is ignoring.
Right. You know, it's, it's very difficult to tell. You know, I think in our line of work, we do our best to see through some of that fog, right? If they're, if we generally pick up on a sense of something like that, or if there's a pattern that we had seen, we'd probably investigate deeper into that issue. One of the things that we do is when having discussions with the victim, we ensure that obviously the perpetrator is not there or within the vicinity of the victim, and in many cases, they're incarcerated. And so the victim also has the ability to provide a statement, and that statement being confidential. And, you know, we don't relay any of that information to the individual that's on supervision. And so we do our best to circumvent that, you know?
I know sometimes it's a no-win situation. They're going to go back and, you know, leaving's a process, not an event, so I just, that, that was a little bit of a flag, but I think you've answered my question. It sounds like it's responsibly evaluated, both Mr. Melton's people and yours.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Any other questions?
I started in nineteen seventy-eight, and parole officers were a whole different animal.
Yeah.
This is gratifying. You guys are providing people with opportunities, not, not just supervision and scrutiny. So I'm very impressed. I'm grateful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Quinn, we've got a bid opening. I know we're running a little behind, but we'll get that knocked out and get right to you. Okay, next up. We've got Justin Sorm, county engineer.
Yes, good morning. So I do have the bid opening. This is for three box culvert projects. One is on County Road Fifty-One South of Comstock, one in Elkton Township, and one in Goose Prairie Township. So we did receive six bids for this project. And the engineer's estimate was seven hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and zero cents. So every bid that I read does have a bid bond in the amount of five percent and is an approved bid. The first bid I received was Tonheim Construction LLC. Their bid was eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents. The second bid we received was from Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid was eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. Eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. The next bid we received was from Celine Brothers Incorporated. Their bid was eight hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and zero cents. Eight hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and zero cents. The next bid we received was from Gladen Construction Incorporated. Their bid was seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. The next bid we received was from Midwest Contracting LLC. Their bid was seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Then the final bid we received was from Cool Excavating LLC. Their bid was six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents. Any questions regarding the bids?
Chair, a question.
Go ahead.
Is that for all three of the box culverts to be replaced?
Yep, so we tie them by contract, so it's combined a little bid.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair. In reviewing the documents, there's quite a significant gap between high and low. You feel confident that six forty-four encompasses?
Yep, so we've worked with this contractor the last two years and kind of similar numbers as you're seeing here with those bids. I don't see any issue with them.
Questions?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve Cool Excavating LLC at the amount six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents for SAP zero fourteen dash five nine eight dash zero seven nine and SAP zero fourteen dash five nine nine dash one oh five and also SAP zero fourteen dash five nine nine dash one fourteen.
I'll second.
Hey, motion to second. Any further comments? It is gratifying to see it come in so far under the engineer estimate.
Yeah, it's definitely been a good year.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll need a roll call.
Commissioner Krabinoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Aye. Motion passes. Cool Excavating.
Thank you.
Okay, Quinn? Quinn Jagger?
Good morning, Commissioners. I have Michelle Thorndall with me as well. She supervises the position. I felt pretty good about the minor cost savings I was going to come to. That's nothing compared to just, took the wind right out of my sails there. I tried, I tried.
Tough act to follow.
That's right, that's right. I am here to request approval to replace a case aide in our Child Protection Division. It is under Michelle Thorndall here. To give you some details here, we have this case aide position open due to resignation. Our staff is getting married and moving. Sorry to see her go, but we're happy for her at the same time. So this position is critical to our agency due to the workload demands of it. We would not be able to reassign these duties to existing staff or positions. To give you a highlight reel of what this position does, all case aides in our Child Protection Division provide transportation and supervised visitation. This one in particular is about seventy-five percent of that transportation of kiddos in foster care, supervising those visits between parents and kiddos at our office or out in the community. Some of the other duties that they do is they coordinate our volunteer driver program as well. This position is specifically in charge of that. They assist with file destruction based on our records retention rules, coordinate, compile, and kind of review state reports. They manage our car seat inventory and they kind of coordinate car seat training for all of our child protection, child welfare staff in the division. They process and review administrative files, vouchers, invoices, and they provide backup coverage. So we cross-train all of our case aides on all the different duties for reasons just like this, so we don't lose any operational functions. So they do kind of know how to do a little bit of everything. In addition to these duties, as visitations kind of wax and wane as we get more or less out-of-home placements, we also get creative, so we might assign alternative tasks to assist other divisions if there's a lull in the supervised visitation or transport. I did attach the wage calculator for your review, but to give you a brief rundown, the existing staff is currently budgeted at grade twelve, step five. We do expect the replacement to start at step one. This position does generate revenue through FFP, so fifty percent. That revenue, as well as the expense of the salary, is budgeted in 2025's budget. So with that change, there's an estimated cost savings of about thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifty. So again, drop in the bucket compared to what Justin just did. But with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve replacing the case aide position. I would request backfill if there is internal interest, but with that, I would yield for any questions that you have.
Questions?
No questions. I'd make a motion, though. Motion to approve hiring the case aide position in the Child Protection Division with backfill. Should there be internal interest?
I will second that.
Hey, motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Krabinoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Aye. Motion passes.
Commissioner Ebbinger?
Yes.
Really quickly, before they leave, I just want to give huge props to Quinn and staff. Really quickly before they leave, I just want to give huge props to Quinn and staff who were able to on the fly get me a ton of information without bothering Steve last week, and they're just doing rock star stuff. And given the feedback that we're hearing down here, I think that's really a testament to the staff that Clay County has, to hear that Clay County is just doing really innovative and thoughtful deliberate work as a direct response to the work of not only Quinn's department, but all the departments. But since I can't see who's exactly there, particularly for Quinn, thanks for the work that you all do.
Thank you.
I will second that. You know, you reflect so well on the county. We've got a great staff. And Quinn, you've hit the ground running and picked up from a superstar and you've become one yourself. We got more franchise players. If the Vikings had it, we'd be in the Super Bowl every year. But the hardest part of being a commissioner around here sometimes is just avoiding sunburn from basking in the sunlight of the people working for this county. And Commissioner Mojo is correct in pointing it out, and we're grateful. It makes our jobs easy. It makes Steve's job incredibly easy. We're thinking of cutting his salary.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Commissioner Mojo, Commissioner Ebinger. Quite honestly, it's not me, it's the supervisors, right? Like, you hit the nail right on the head. I think I was able to hit the ground running because we already had the staff in place that do good work, so anything that is me is actually them, so I appreciate it.
Well, thanks to all you guys. All right, next up, we have got, yes, we've got the Extension Service. I'm trying to find my, here we go. You guys have patiently been waiting, so we'll get the computer up for you and come on forward and introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Happy New Year. We're grateful to have the opportunity to sit here and just kind of give you some programmatic update. My name is Cecilia Amadou. I serve as the Regional Director with the University of Minnesota, and we have all the office staff here, so I'll let them introduce themselves. We're missing one staff for medical purposes, that's Rosie, but other than that, we have full staff in front of you, so I'll let Jen introduce herself.
Jen Erdahl, I'm Extension Support Staff.
Jillian Patri, I'm the Extension Horticulture Educator.
Monique Stelzer, 4H Youth Development.
Mindy Grant, 4H Youth Development.
All right, we gotta kick it off. All right, well, Mindy and I just introduced ourselves. We are with the 4H Youth Development Program. We are both Extension educators within Extension as well, so we'll kind of kick off our presentation today. 4H Youth Development is the largest youth-serving organization in Minnesota. Yeah, I can. All right, so 4H Youth Development is the largest youth-serving organization in Minnesota. We have lots of youth across lots of different pathways and program areas. I'll let Mindy kind of explain how youth come to 4H and what 4H looks like as a foundational level.
Well, the goals of Minnesota 4H are, we have three-part goals. We want kids to learn how to, we want them to learn, we want them to lead, and we also create the environment that they learn and lead in. So with learning, we're looking for youth to identify a spark and develop that into a passion through hands-on experiences and really learn what they're good at, what they want to learn, and what they want to do. And building upon that, we ask them to lead. There are many different ways to lead, but basically we want them to take a look around their community and be exposed to different areas that interest them and how they can make changes or be leaders, not only with their peer group, but inside the community as well. And then creating high-quality youth environments is our focus with all of our volunteers. We may be two-staff people, but we have 84 volunteers? Eighty-four volunteers that are helping us carry out all of these programs across Clay County. Next slide? And basically how we do this is youth learn by doing. It's actually, one of our foundational pieces is experiential learning. So instead of school-type where you're standing at the head of a classroom telling kids what they need to know, we are actually giving them activities and walking them through the process, as well as our volunteers are walking them through the process through their community clubs and after-school activities. Ninety-five percent of participants across Minnesota do report applying what they learned through 4H to other parts of their lives, and that's ideally what we want to see. Learn something in 4H and take it out into the world and into the community and build upon those skills there. And there are many different ways that youth come into 4H. I know traditionally we think of the 4H Club that a lot of us were familiar with when we were growing up. So we have those community clubs as well. We have 10 of those across Clay County. They meet once a month at a place of their choosing. People can self-select which club they feel a sense of belonging with and want to participate in. And then we also have after-school programs. We work with the community ed districts across Clay County to do after-school programs, bringing in STEM activities, art activities. We work closely with our partners in community ed to identify what are the needs that the students are looking for and the families are looking for there, to bring in programs that are, programs that they're excited about. And then we also have summer programs. Summer programs, we've worked with the community eds again. There are many rural districts in our area that don't have a park district to have activities for kids. So we love to go out to Yulin, Barnesville, Holly, Glendon, and provide some of those activities and summer programs for youth through those community ed programs at the school district. And then we also do other partner programs. I currently work with Cultural Diversity Resources, New Roots Midwest, and other community organizations that are looking for youth development programs in the evenings and weekends.
All right, so Mindy kind of talked about the different ways that young people come to the 4H program. The most recognizable and long-term or longstanding program is the Community Club Program. And of course, the place where we see the Community Club members most active or their signature highlight is the County Fair. So when we're looking at what that traditional Community Club Program in Clay County looks like, last year we had 344 enrolled youth members. We're on track to exceed that number this year. We retain 91% of those youth, which is pretty phenomenal, that we keep those youth engaged year to year. And we know that young people gain the most benefit from participating in youth development programs when they participate over a long term. We had 145 first-year members, so brand-new members. Previous year, we have 10 community-based clubs. We also have two project groups. We have a Lego League group, and we also have a Shooting Sports and Wildlife group as well. Last year, County Fair, we had 224 youth who showcased their exhibits, who brought an exhibit to the fair. They brought more than one exhibit to the fair. They actually ended up bringing 1,507 exhibits to the County Fair. That averages out to about six exhibits per child that they're bringing to the County Fair. So they're engaged in 4H to do more than just one thing in most cases. Most of our youth are actually showing both animals in addition to general static exhibits. So it's exciting to see that we have that engagement across both project areas or both project types for our young people. And Josie is one of those youth there that we have a quote from, and she's the one on the right there, actually. So she's been participating in the fair for a long time, and she pretty consistently earns trips down to the Minnesota State Fair. And so she's found great value in her youth leadership opportunities within the club as well as participating in the fair events.
And this is just a little bit about some of our after-school programs or our short-term programs. We had over 281 youth participate last year in those types of programs. So this is a very valuable space for our youth and our families to come together and interact with 4H and engage with our programs. As I said, we did work with the four school partners with their community eds, and we also had eight community partners that we worked with, whether it was finding locations or people who were helping deliver programming or providing the youth and the participants for our programming. And we try to incorporate the same aspects that you would see in a community club within our after-school and partnership programs, where we're having adults in the leadership position guiding youth through their programs and their information and their projects that they're doing. But we also try to bring in individual work as well as group work. In this particular picture, this was a STEM program on rainforests, and at the end of the learning experience, they are building rainforest models with watercolors where they're all working together as a team. So we try to build in those experiences where they get to work together and showcase their work to each other within those short-term programs as well. And youth who participate in 4H do develop a strong sense of belonging and confidence in their future. That's one of the things that we're really proud of. We are beginning a new program called Beyond Ready, where we're really looking at preparing youth for the future. What do they want to do with the skills they learn and the passions that they have so that they can move forward in their future pathways, thinking of higher education, job markets, that sort of thing? So we have taken youth to different universities around the area just to get an idea of what that means and to help them visualize what it would be to be at a university and what their future could look like. And then talking about volunteers, we have over 234 volunteers that we've used countywide over the last year. The adults that help us deliver our program are dedicated to bringing their expertise and increasing youth learning. This is a very important feature, as I said, two-staff, 84 screen volunteers, 234 people that we've used over the course of the year. And they're helping build a sense of belonging. They're building a welcoming environment where the kids feel that it's their ownership and space, and they feel comfortable, and they feel like they can lead, and they're willing to take those risks and learn some new things. And that's a very important feature. If we want kids to expand and learn, they have to have that confidence and that safety of I belong here and if I make a mistake, it's okay. And that all, all of our different positions that we use volunteers in add up. You know, typically we do think of the club leaders, and yes, we do have club leaders, but we also have people that are helping at County Fair. Had about 155 different adults volunteer for us at the County Fair last year. Just to put on the 4H aspect of it, that was not even everything else that was happening at County Fair. We have 27 project and club leaders and about 52 different spots for volunteers over the course of the year for different events, different committees. It really does take a village to create this program. So we're very proud of all of our volunteers that help service our program.
All right, so all that said, it takes a team. It's Mindy, myself, and Jen that are the primary support and program management for the Clay County 4H program. We each kind of have different roles. We have different tasks and priorities that we take on. I provide support to the Community Club Program, volunteer training, youth leadership, those pieces. Mindy really supports our program partners and in our after-school programs, so we each have our specialty areas. And Jen, well, Jen just does everything. She supports us all and makes us look good, and I don't think we could get through a week without her. So that's, it takes our team. So I just wanted to recognize each of my teammates that help with that and say thank you, and thank you to you guys as well for helping support the 4H Youth Program in Clay County.
As I said before, I'm Jill Patri, and I'm the Horticulture Educator. I also coordinate master gardeners in Clay County. So part of my duties are helping with them with projects, getting them organized, recruiting new master gardeners, and then also county workshops, education, technical support. So I'm just gonna do a quick recap of last year. So we had a few really great programs that we did. Garden Buzz is an after-school program that one of our master gardeners, who also is a 4H parent, does. She did that at three of our elementary schools here in Clay County, and that was just four sessions based on garden-related topics for youth. And then we had another intern, master gardener intern helper with that. We also do help organize One Vegetable, One Community. Last year was radishes. So each year, a vegetable is picked, kind of statewide, and brochures are made. We put seeds in those, and it has planting instructions and how to cook with them, so it's a partnership with SNAP Ed as well. So that program, we did little educational events at all of the libraries in Clay County, and then at a few other events, and then also have brochures available for people to grab. So I think we distributed about 500 or so brochures throughout the county. Master Gardeners also managed six public garden spaces. A few of them are here on-site, and then we have a couple downtown. We did have five interns last year, which all completed the program and are now master gardeners. Then we did have a few new events to our group last year. We started a learning garden tour. We had sites in Dilworth and Moorhead. So what that is, is people buy tickets and then they can go visit different gardens or other, we had a greenhouse as well throughout the county, learn about how that person implemented it. We had some people with backyard chickens, so people just kind of learn about different ways to garden in the area. It's a fun event, gets community out and together and networking. And then, so that was Master Gardeners last year. And then last year, just in my role as technical assistance in offering education opportunities and then connecting residents to resources from the university, I was able to answer around 190 questions, emails, phone calls, stops into the office, send pictures, go out to people's houses and help them with questions in their yard. I did 13 presentations, so I like to partner with the libraries. It's a great place to have a public workshop that's free. People can just come and stop by if they're interested in the subject. And then we attended, myself and Master Gardeners also attended about 14 outreach events, so River Arts, Farmer's Market, Moorhead Farmer's Market. We went to Potato Days. We went to several other tabling events at things around the county. So just networking, talking to people. Ask a master gardener is also there so they can ask gardening questions. And then I also have the opportunity to write for the Plant Talk section in the FM Extra. So usually I have an article in there weekly, but depends on what's going on in the county, but I think I've had about 30 articles in there. So I think of things that are relevant to the season to write about, otherwise people ask questions too and want to know more, so I throw a little bit of that into the newspaper. Most of my questions I answered were horticulture-related. I did answer a few agriculture-related questions, a lot about land rent, those questions. This year, we are excited to welcome seven interns into our master gardener program. So as soon as they complete that program, we'll be up to 21 master gardeners, which we had 12 when I came in last year. We've added a few that were on leave too, so it's exciting. We're growing, able to do more programming. This year, we welcomed back Winter Garden College. We did have that as a program in Moorhead a couple years ago before COVID, so we've brought that back. It's a series where we travel to different counties in Minnesota, pick a few topics. This year, it was cover crops and season extension methods, so people who are interested in that could come check it out. We are planning on continuing that next year, so we'll have a Moorhead stop on that series. I just had a seed starting and garden basics workshop last Monday. We had about 50 people come to that, so that was awesome at the Moorhead Public Library. People are getting excited about starting seeds and gardening. I partnered with another colleague to bring the agriculture business team up here from the regional state team, and we offered a farm transition and estate planning workshop in Holly last week, so really targeting people who are looking to hand off their farm to another generation and how that process goes. Last Friday, too, we had a hands-on apple pruning workshop up at MB Johnson's. We partnered with Moorhead Parks and Rec and Forestry to help do a little bit of community service and prune the apple trees up at the edible forest up at MB Johnson. But then also, people got the chance to do apple pruning hands-on. I think a lot of people are scared to prune their trees, so it was great to have people be able to do that and ask questions. And then I have a list, a laundry list of other workshops that we're planning this spring. Yeah, that's about it for me. Also, I'm always welcome to any comments, requests for things that you've seen, people are really interested in, thinking about doing a backyard chicken workshop, too, just to help support those questions with backyard chickens being something you can do in Moorhead, and then a few other towns looking at implementing that, too. So, any questions, comments?
Questions?
Well, certainly make a comment. I just want to say, great work, you know, being around and watching this organization, listen to your numbers, how much they've grown, your interaction with the, the community is to be commended. So, yeah, just want to say big kudos for your work. And yes, pruning the apple tree, which you taught my wife last week.
Yes.
Yep, we're going to do it this way. So when you said throw a baseball cap through it, I don't know about that one, but we'll see. That's heavy duty to me. But we'll see. Appreciate it.
Any other comments, questions?
I, I have one question. It'd be for the 4H. Where would I find a list of the 10 clubs countywide? If I, if I'm looking to join in a club, is, is it online? Where would I find that list?
Yeah. So if you pop onto the Clay County Extension website, and it is the University of Minnesota website, but if you pop onto there and you click on to, there's a drawer on our website that's like, "Join a Club" or "Become a Member." It actually identifies who our 10 clubs are. In addition, it gives you videos about what are, what does 4H project work look like and what to expect as a family coming in and joining the program.
For each club individually?
Nope. So it gives an overview as a 4H, like if you join as a family, you know, what does project work look like? How much does it cost to join 4H? Kind of the basic FAQs that we get. Those are answered there, and then there's a list of clubs.
And contact information there?
We can't post their contact information publicly like that, so you would need to connect the 4H office, but we can put you in touch with the club leader. Yeah.
I can get you in touch with the club leader, Ezra.
Yeah?
Yeah, right? You know one pretty close.
And also, for your events that you pull off, you have a heavy presence on social media.
Yeah. Jen manages our extension website, so we beg her to put things on there. And then Master Gardeners has a Facebook page, too, where we publicize resources as well as events that are going on, too.
Yeah. And if you dabble into the 4H pool on social media, there are livestock project groups just within Clay County. There's a horse project group within Clay County. And almost every one of our clubs has their own club group on Facebook as well. So, and then we have the extension page where 4H posts their content as well.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I could, just want to thank you guys for the work that you do. I think that, going back to, I think I mentioned before, I'm a, I'm a Traverse County Walls Booster, 4H member. It was one of the first opportunities, you know, with leadership of, of working with a team, eventually running meetings. I got to go to the state fair. I saw Kenny Loggins' Starship. Everybody's like, "Who?" Right? "Who are you, who are you talking about?" The Fat Boys, rap group, you know. And what I really learned, you know, 40 years later is that got me prepared. As the cannabis legalization came through Minnesota, I learned a lot about cannabis that night, and it's, it's helping me moving forward through, through today. So, but I really want to thank you guys for all the work that you do.
And we want to thank you all as a board for your continued support for our program. Last year, we went through a process of renegotiating our contract, and we're just grateful to have full staff. We do have a little bit of a transition happening. Mindy is moving on, getting promoted, I should say. So we have a position open, and thanks, Jackie, for putting it on the website. So get the word out. Once that person is hired, we'll introduce them as well, but yeah.
Very good. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming down, and thank you for your patience. Yes, Jenny, I was waiting for you.
Thank you. I just want to highlight, I know that Gillian has a master gardener fundraiser going on right now. They've got some really exciting plants that are available for that sale. So you can go on that website and find that. I just want to thank Mindy. Mindy helped lead the county 4H during a really time of unknown with COVID and what shutdowns and all of those policies and procedures were. And so I just want to appreciate and lift up your work, Mindy. Thank you for that. I'm really excited for you to continue those, those good work at the regional side. And then, too, just from the county office perspective, I've always talked about maybe being a little too involved with county 4H with now four children in 4H this year. But you really do a great job trying to network and, and lift up so many different issues that happen with 4H year-round. I know that you work really hard to foster a good relationship with the Fair Board, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So thank you for your work.
And thank you, thank you for your patience. I know we were a little behind today, but appreciate it. Let's take a five-minute break. Minister Stephen Larson on our payment to Innovate 28.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board is aware, the Greater Fargo-Moorehead Economic Development and the Fargo-Moorehead Chamber are two entities that we consider participating in payments to on an annual basis through our budget process. This past year, the EDC and the Chamber came before us to request a combined budget request of $185,000 to, and to participate in the Innovate 28 program that, that their initiative they're bringing forward. On January 28th, we received our first invoice, or the invoice for, request for funding, and this board had a discussion about, about making sure that the message from the Clay County, Minnesota side is being brought forward on an equal basis, and therefore, at that time, directed the, directed the administration and personnel to pay half of the funds and, and the second allocation at a later date. I was approached by members of the commission requesting that this be brought forward to, to have a discussion about making that second payment. So with that, I would turn it over to, to the board chair to have any comments.
Comments? I know Commissioner Mojo, your clock's ticking, so you go first.
Thank you. I just had some conversations with Commissioner Krabinoff, and I had honestly been down here a lot. And so we've seen the work that the Chamber has done just to step up the legislative efforts at the Capitol. And I know a portion of what the Innovate 28 funds are allocated for is to really bolster that effort. And I can just honestly tell you that the work they've done here is just tenfold what they've done in years past. The connections we've been making here are just pretty amazing, and they have a lobbyist that's really helping with that effort. And, you know, part of why we held the funds is just to see what the effort would be on the Minnesota side. And with the work that's been done, I'm confident in releasing that second phase of payment.
Other comments?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to echo that. I mean, our day at the Capitol, totally run by the Chamber, was just top-level. And as she mentioned, their lobbyist is so well-engaged, and we're getting so many benefits out of this. It'd be very, very difficult to do what we're doing without their support. So with that, I'd like to move to make a motion to get their second payment paid in full from us for the Innovate 28 program.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, motion is second. Any other comments?
Just one comment. Could we still have them come in and give a, an update on how this money's being spent?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Bear, we certainly could, certainly can invite them back to have both, both of the representatives here to talk about.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a point, and I think of reference, not so much for this year, but next. Serving on the EDC board, I'm aware that there is funding that has been directed to the EDC and not to Innovate 28. I am grateful to the Chamber. I've just gone through an election process, and they did a great job of featuring our candidates and our positions. I, I think that maybe next year, I want to give some consideration to where the money's distributed and how it's spent. But this year, I think we're committed. With that, is there, are there any other comments? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Krabinoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Mojo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bear?
Yes.
Commissioner Ebner?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ebner?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I do have to go over to the Capitol now, but I just really appreciate the work that you're all doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck. We appreciate what you're up to. If I could make everybody aware, we do have staff waiting, and one of them's got to conduct a wedding at the government center at 10:30 for the next meeting. So if we could be as expedient as we could on committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Krabinoff.
All right. Well, last Tuesday, on the 18th, I had my Adult Mental Health, LAC, monthly meeting. We really just did a review of agency reports with those attending, sharing information back and forth. On the 19th, I had the Historical and Cultural Society Finance Committee Meeting. Two things I'll make note of there, we were, the first part of the year, we bill up our inventories over at the gift shop. So if you're lucky to find some things that, over at the museum area, please drop in. They have a good selection there. And admissions at this point are continuing to stay very strong for, for, over at the Yemcom Center. On Thursday, on the 20th, that was a really good morning presentation that we had with the Suicide and Substance Use Prevention Group, 56 people on board. Kind of true to the group, it was hard. We'd had a suicide in Moorhead of an eighth grader that we all reflected on. And, and that group is so committed to the work of working with youth and adults and, and preventing these things best we can. There was a presentation about caring for yourself as a caregiver, pointing out the attributes of good mental health and bringing those attributes into a healthy balance of living. There was an update from the public hearing to the group regarding tobacco ordinance, strongly supported by many of the members in this group. HRA was my next meeting that day. Thank you again. I'm repeating a little bit here. Thanks to the federal continuing resolution. It looks for 2024 anyway, that our funding is stable, and the work that they're doing with the assistance of the levy they get along with in Clay County to their work. Their properties are continuing to get back in shape, and the vacancies are down quite a lot. So they're moving in a positive fashion. Later that afternoon, I had a meeting at MetroCog. It was the approve, the review and approval of the 2024 North Dakota DOT reported for project expenses. And then last but not least, on Friday, was our team meeting, which was for legislative work that normally is led by Rep. Keeler and then joined in with Senator Kupac. And we were just talking about testimonies. That conversation was leading into what Commissioner Mojo's down there for today. Last week, it was more with DHS, and this week, starting the testimony day, is with capital investments. So one for appropriations for the PRTF, and now we're getting to the bonding, ask for the new juvenile center. So we're hopeful.
Thank you. Commissioner Bear?
On March 18th, I filled in for the Planning Commission for Commissioner Mojo. We had one public, well, two public hearings, one applicant for, it was Ryan Bushvik. He was running a home occupation out of his home, and it would be a landscape business. We passed that unanimously. And then we also had a public hearing on the Clay County Land Development and subdivision ordinances. We had an update there from Matt Jacobson. And then lastly, that night, we had a recommendation to appoint Josh Schroeder, which we dealt with today, which he, we'll welcome him to the Planning Commission. Then yesterday, I had a meeting up in Ada with Wild Rice Marsh River Watershed, One Watershed, One Plan meeting, a policy committee meeting, where we discussed the funding grants, the 2021 funding grant. We, there was an extension to be done, spend all that money by the end of 2024, which they accomplished. And now we're on to the grant from 2023. And if all the construction gets, happens this year, we will have that grant used up for the watershed-based funding grant. And then they'll be on to Grant 2025, which has an end date of 2027 for that money to be used on, yeah, that money would be used with the, through the SWCDs of the One Watershed, One Plan group. And then last night, we had a meeting, myself and Commissioner Ebner. We were at the American Legion in Moorhead, and we discussed the tribal land purchase with the gaming officials from Moorhead. It was a very informational meeting, I think, on both sides. It's a lot, a lot is unknown right now, so we're just talking about what, what could be there, what might not be there, and just going forward. That is all my committee reports.
Thank you. On the 18th, last Tuesday, I attended the PIC meeting. Sheriff Amting and Chief Deputy Martin presented the request, which will be coming forward here at some point to overfill a position to cover for a deputy who has been deployed. And the discussion on that will be covered when it's presented to the whole commission. I attended the, virtually the Suicide and Substance Use Prevention Coalition meeting that Commissioner Krabinoff spoke of, and he covered it very well. And last night, myself and Commissioner Bear were at the American Legion, talking to the gaming people. Derek Lapointe was there representing City of Moorhead. Again, I think we reassured them that this is early in the stage, stages of what's going on, and we have nothing specific, but we're going to move forward in talking to officials from White Earth in, in one of our commission meetings, and the city of Moorhead also plans to have them in and maybe get more specifics. And that completes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I was on vacation and again thanked the board for the opportunity to take that week off to be with my family. Just to, I'll just touch base on a couple of things. I listened to the meeting. You've touched on the majority of my meetings the week before. We did have county management last week, talked about budgeting, the budget for the upcoming year, some different HR things that are going to be happening or are being implemented. Also did some testimony preparation for Senate File 2022. On Thursday, I had the opportunity to be down there with Senator Kupac and Steve Summers from Solutions Behavioral Health. We testified before the Senate, or Health and Human Services Committee on our, on our funding for the remodeling of the current juvenile center to a PRTF. And I think everything else was covered during that time. Just a note, next week, we are scheduled in the afternoon to have our quarterly, or excuse me, session with the EDA/EDC after, in the afternoon after our board meeting. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, do you have anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Darren?
Nope. I was also on vacation. Thanks, Steve.
And Jackie?
Got nothing, Mr. Chair.
You were holding down the fort. If we don't have any additional, meeting's adjourned. If we don't have any additional, meeting's adjourned.